Did that work?
Do it a couple more times.
Time on the wall says seven o'clock. It's time to begin. Before we start our agenda, I'll ask our invocation be given by Brian Nevins, the Earl Anger Police Chaplain. Thank you for being with us this evening.
If you please draw your hand if you'd like to pray. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your day and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for the measure of help we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship here in Friendship City. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities, for loving us and spite ourselves for your boundless grace and kindness. Your word states that citizens are to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities who promote peace and honor, order and justice. Your word also states that you guide hipairs of nations and of cities and of humankind. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, Tom Rouse, for all of our city officials and for this assembled council. I pray especially for the men and new responsibilities of this administration. Chief Mark Fields is the city administrator, Captain Bob Arons is chief of police, Lieutenant Tony Wilson is captain. Please grant them all wisdom and the ability to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true need of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rights, confidence in what is good and fair, the ability to work together in harmony even in honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives enjoying their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Earl Anger. Is it in the name of your son Jesus that I ask these things? Amen?
Amen.
I'll call the October 1st, 2013 Regular Meeting of Earl Anger City Council to order and ask we all please stand while we pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Hoffman.
Mr. Longshore. Mr. Burke.
Here.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Here.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Here.
Ms. Pitts.
Here.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Ms. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Blankenship.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Longshore sent an email. He was detained at work and is sorry for the inconvenience and sorry he's not here. But we have a quorum. We may proceed. You should have on your...oh, first of all, we did a roll call, didn't we? Today's October 1st, isn't it? Jim, you got a birthday?
Yes, sir.
How old are you now?
This is the 14th anniversary of my 29th birthday.
I think we should sing "Happy Birthday" to Jim Brown.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday dear Jimmy. Happy Birthday to you.
We don't get to do that very often and I like picking on Jim, so there. You should have copies of the minutes of regular council meeting on September 3rd, 2013. Are there any corrections or additions to be made at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to be adopted as presented. Motion by Ms. Kyle, second by Mr. Dunhoff. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's time for our special presentations. This is a night of the changing of the guard and of bringing some order to some chaos, chaos which maybe I created, but it's a great night for the city of Earl Anger and I can't wait to get to it. First, though, my great friend Chris Cadell's here and he's going to talk to us about lifeline ministries. Chris, the podium is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Steve. Councilpeople, we appreciate you having us tonight. This is Kathy Cummins. Kathy is really sort of the managerial piece of what we're able to accomplish as a ministry, but she actually has quite a fear of speaking in front of people, so I...
So she brought you.
Totally involved hands, it would be just fine to give her.
She's a former volunteer for the Earl Anger Rescue Squad.
She is. She ran squads, so she's very familiar with the city and loves what you do and who you are, so we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We are representing lifeline ministries in northern Kentucky. We are a Christian, all-volunteer-run organization that's existed for almost nine years now. We launched as a ministry out of my house in 2004 packing a pair of baskets that went into Sandy Hospital with the families of cardiac surgery patients. And as that grew and word kind of filtered through the community, we were several years in having hundreds of people at my house packing 15 or 1600 baskets a month going free of charge to families in about a dozen healthcare facilities in town. We've been in our current location, just about a mile from here, is a crow fly, is a 4111 to 4115 Dixie Highway, which is actually in Elsmere, but we serve quite a few people that are in the Earl Anger area as well. We've been there, as I said, about five years and our operation has totally shifted gears from baskets to having clothing, shoes, food of all sorts of different varieties, harvested food from restaurants and franchises such as Chipotle and other national chain that you would recognize, in an effort to feed and clothe and provide tangible items as a way to show God's love to people free of charge. And we're also, nine years later, still volunteer-operated. We have no liability against pay with an organization. We have about 150 volunteers from all over the community to help operate what we do. From a strictly numbers perspective, we've absolutely been long away in the numbers of people that we've been able to help in this area. If our numbers and our projections hold just for the calendar year 2013, we will serve 8,800 families from our little locations, about 6,500 square feet, just about a mile from here, many of those from the Earl Anger, Elsmere area. We have had our eyes wide open over the last several years to the number of homeless people that are living within several mile radius of what we're doing that are walking in. We're seeing mothers walking several miles with children with no shoes on their feet that are coming in and getting ministered to through our ministry. So I just wanted to let you know how thankful we are. We've got some great partnerships that have developed with Lloyd High School and Mary Ann Moore, the resource director, and also Tishner Middle School. One of the last pieces of ministry we developed in our building there is called the Free Bean Cafe, strictly a sort of a retail-looking Starbucks-type location where people can come in and get free coffee and donuts, but that has morphed over the years into serving hot meals daily to people coming in. That unit itself, outside of the rest of our ministry, last month alone served 2,800 patrons that came through there that received hot meals, donuts, coffee, cold drinks. We have free internet for people that need to search for jobs, for school kids that don't have the internet at home. What I love about us is we are absolutely still, nine years later, a grassroots organization that has no aspirations of being a large corporation and we're all about loving people in a nonjudgmental fashion. So that in a nutshell is what we've done. We actually about two months ago served our 50,000th family in nine years and I'm amazed continually how that provides for us and the fact that it's all done with volunteer dollars, not because they know Chris Cadell or because they know Kathy Cummins, but because they see absolute authentic love being given away to these families and individuals coming in who are hurting and helpless for the most part. So very thankful to have been here tonight.
Chris, your location's still right across the street from Frishe's, isn't it?
Sort of category from the Autozone sport.
That's right.
Yes.
That's right. You're providing a great service to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. We're going back to serve some people now.
Okay. And because of the nature of the evening, I've moved some legislation out of order. You ready for Mr. Wickman for a couple of municipal orders?
Yes, sir. First one is a municipal order of the city council of the city of Earl Anger in Kenton County, Kentucky approving the appointment of Mark Fields to the office of city administrative
Entertain a motion to be adopted. Motion by Mr. Dunhoff, second by Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Skidmore.
Yes.
Ms. Cahill.
Yes.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Burke.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes all ayes. I will sign the municipal order right now.
You got a camera?
It's too late now, Mark. You are what you are. Mr. Wickman.
Yes, sir. It's a municipal order of the city council of the city of Earl Anger in Kenton County, Kentucky approving the appointment of Robert Arons to the office of police chief.
I'll entertain a motion to be adopted. Motion by Ms. Sudcamp, second by Ms. Pitts. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dunhoff.
Absolutely.
Mr. Burke.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Kyle.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pitts.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Howard.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Blankenship.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Sudcamp.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Cahill.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes all ayes. I shall sign the municipal order. Thank you very much. Former Chief Fields, are you prepared to take the constitutional oath?
Yes, sir.
Come forward, please. There we go. Put your right hand...raise your right hand and put your left hand on the bible. That's it. That's it. Do you, Mark Fields, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of city administrator according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Congratulations.
The girl in the front seat cannot cry. I want to make sure that they don't do that. You can. All I meant to tell you was this is better suite. It's really too weird. Leaving a career where I had a uniform on and badge on for 30 years and coming into this new position, it was just an opportunity. Sitting in the back, GPA, Chief Sandel, none of this would have been possible without you taking a chance on me and I thank you for that. You hired me, Mr. Fields. I had to write this down and I couldn't do it in three minutes. I tell you, I'm going to now leave the lifeiest person in the world. I had such a rewarding career with the city and no one could have scripted that. During my entire career, I've had the complete support and love from my family, my wife Sandy, who has always been supportive and encouraging, and my sons, Josh and Doyle. Thank you. Mayor and council, I want to thank you for the support you've shown us and without that support, I don't think I would have made this league. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Department heads, citizens, employees, for the past 27 years, I've come to work every day with one goal in mind, was to make life better for the citizens of Earl Anger and to make life better for all the employees within the police department. Today, I came to work with little expanding vision. That one was to make things better for all the people that live in the city of Earl Anger and also all the employees now, not just as not the police department. My promise to you is I will do this every day. Every day, that's what you'll get from me and I can't express enough the gratitude for the opportunities that y'all give me. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll ask our city administrator to come take his seat at my right hand. It's a long walk, isn't it?
It is.
Congratulations. Captain Arons, are you prepared to take the constitutional oath?
Yes, sir.
Are you prepared to become Colonel Arons?
Yes, sir.
Would you come forward, please? Put your left hand on the bible and raise your...yeah, that's it. Do you, Robert Arons, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of police chief according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, you, being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Congratulations, Chief. Carter Raxx.
I too want to thank the mayor and council for this opportunity and the confidence in me that I want to be...I'd like to thank also Ken Jayden and Rick Sandel for giving me the opportunity earlier from Elsmere where I started. Mark Fields, thank you for your support and your leadership and the guidance over the years, most of all for the friendship, the bond that we developed over the span of our careers. I want to thank my family, friends and colleagues for their support. I want to thank the men and women of the Earl Anger Police Department and the dispatch Senator Paul House. What an awesome show of support. These men and women are the reason why I stand before you today. A leader is only as good as the people he surrounds himself with and we have the best of the best right back here in the back. What an awesome honor it is to be the chief of the best police department in the state of Kentucky. I hope this honor can take me back. We as leaders create a vision. We set a goal. We set a course, a direction for us to go on it. If there's been a woman back there that could get us there, we do very little but just set the course for everyone. No bridge or whatever, no one's to get us where we want to go. A special thanks to my family, Rick, who's in the Army Station, Fort Gough, Carson, Colorado, my wife, my best friend, my partner in life, Karen, for all the support she has given throughout my career. I share this success with you. Lastly, I'd like to thank the Lord for my family and a very rewarding profession. There is nothing better than one of them every day and knowing that you made a difference in someone's life, whether it's a child, whether it's an elder, whether it's an adult. If you had that opportunity every day to go out on the job, that's very rewarding. Thank you.
Lieutenant Wilson, are you prepared to take the constitutional oath? Would you come forward, sir? Left hand on the bible, raise your right hand. Do you, Anthony Wilson, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of assistant police chief according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, you, being a citizen of this Commonwealth, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within the state nor out of it, nor have you sent a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help you God? Congratulations.
I really don't want to stand up here in front of everybody. I want to thank everybody for coming. I'm spread out at the end of the position. First person I need to thank is Chief Rick Sandel. In fact, I gave me the opportunity 21 years ago to come work for this police department. It's the best in the state, like Chief Aaron said. I would have been here if I worked on a mess force. Bob Arons, Todd Rice, Tim Thangs and Mark Fields mentored me over the last 20 years that kept me on straight and narrow. They showed me what I needed to do to succeed and hopefully I follow in the footsteps and do the job that they've done for me. I'm honored to be here. It's a great place to work, a lot of services that I like here. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Patty, you want to take the pins down?
Yeah.
We have a service award. Mark, are you going to participate?
Yes, sir. I'm the first one.
You're on the first one.
Yeah. You're working now, bud.
Click that time card in that slot and pull it out.
Chief Aaron, could you come up here to test that? This is kind of ironic, thinking about tonight, what's just happened. Now I get the honor of giving you your 25th anniversary. I sat down last night to write a farewell email to the police department. About four hours later, when I was done, it really dawned on me how much our careers mirrored each other. For instance, I was started here in 1986. Bob started here in 1988. I was promoted to sergeant in 1992. Bob was promoted to sergeant in 1995. We both got promoted to lieutenant on the very same day, 1998. And when I was lucky enough to become chief or assistant chief and then chief, Bob was promoted at that same time, December 2003, we had been together for that long. And now, I leave it all to you. Bob's always been by my side. He calmed me when I needed to be calmed. Trust me, early on in my career, I needed to be calm. He advised me when I needed it and he was always there for me, but most of all, he's my dear friend. We have shared many good times and a few bad times together. We've made tough decisions together, but I know our relationship will continue in our new positions. It's been and will continue to be an honor and a privilege to serve the city when Bob is our chief. And I know that he will succeed this position. We're all very lucky that he accepted this challenge. Bob, I thank you for everything that you've done for me, the city and just be a friend. Thank you.
So does this man have to call him a boss now? Because all the years we worked together, we never considered him a boss. I always just considered him a boss because we always worked so well together, came up together. I guess I call you boss now.
Chief Arons, you're back up front.
From the back of the room?
Bill gets his 10-year pin. Bill was hired in 2003 as a police officer. He served as a bike officer, accident reconstructionist. He received several accolades on different areas of his work, an FTO, and just recently been promoted to sergeant. Bill has amazing talent. I believe his future here in Earl Anger is promising. I'm looking forward to working with him in the future. Very good.
First, I'd like to thank Chief Fields for giving me the opportunity 10 years ago. If it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be here and then obviously the mentorship that I get from Assistant Chief Wilson and Chief Arons here. He has a great department. Everybody knows that on the staff of the FBI. This is one of the best departments in the state by far. I'm honored to work there. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kyle, can I wait and get out? I'm still in FTO. Have you been able? Hey, we can FTO. Kyle was hired in 2008 as a dispatch. He worked in dispatch for a little bit over four years. We just hired him as a police officer this year and he got out of the academy and thinks we could FTO. Kyle, congratulations.
Thanks, sir. Goodbye.
Okay, I might change gear. We have one more presentation this evening. Because it's October, this is always Fire Prevention Month. And this is a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Earl Anger to all to whom these presents shall come, whereas the city of Earl Anger is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the United States in 2011, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 370,000 home fires. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas the city of Earl Anger's Fire EMS is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, Prevent Kitchen Fires, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the use of kitchen fires. Now therefore, I, Thomas L. Rouse, mayor of the city of Earl Anger, Kenton County, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim October 6th to 12th, 2013, to be Fire Prevention Week in Earl Anger and do commend this observance to all of our citizens, given under the hand, my hand and seal, the city of Earl Anger on this first day of October 2, 2013. Chief Shulkers, would you take this to the fire department, please? Thank you, sir. The mayor's report tonight is going to be very simple. The quality of the people that we observed taking oaths and moving into new positions this evening... this evening made the decisions that I had to make, the decisions made themselves. They were absolutely, undisputably, the right thing to do at the right time. It took us a while to get here. It took some convincing. But eventually, I got him to think that it was his idea. And then when it became his idea, it worked. This is a good night for the City of Earlanger. You think we've been flying, we're going to fly. And we're going to fix the, we're going to finish the job with the Fire Department very soon, and we'll be all hands on deck and move ahead very rapidly. So I thank all of you for your patience to get us through this process. We went through a period of self-analysis. We went through a period of trying to decide what we needed in this position, every one of us. We kicked things around. We threw job descriptions around. I think Mark listened to all of this, and he knows what we need in this position, having heard all of our discussions and our debates, and I have no doubt that he will exceed and excel. And I can go back to being a part-time mayor and a lawyer, and that's yay for me. That's, that's the end of the mayor's report this evening. The reports of standing committees, Public Safety Police, Ms. Sudcamp, Ms. Pitts. You have nothing to report tonight, do you?
Well, it all speaks for itself. Congratulations to all of us. I'm just so thrilled for us, for this, for that, for every, oh. We're really going to go now.
Corinne? Chief Aaron's.
No report. What the heck?
Any questions of the Police Committee or the Chief? Next, the Public Safety Fire EMS, Ms. Skidmore, Mr. Dunhoff.
Yes, I'm going to elaborate a little bit on the mayor's report about the fire prevention. Just going to read part of the report that Chief Todd Schulkers printed, put out. So it says, "Time for Fire Prevention Week, and from October 6th to the 12th, Earlanger Fire EMS is joining forces with the nonprofit National Fire Protection Association to remind local residents to prevent kitchen fires. During this year's fire safety campaign, firefighters and safety advocates will be spreading the word about the dangers of kitchen fires, most of which result from unattended cooking, and teaching local residents how to prevent kitchen fires and from starting in the first place. According to the latest NFPA research, cooking is the leading cause of home fires. Two of every five home fires begin in the kitchen, more than any other place in the home. Cooking fires are also the leading cause of home fire-related injuries. Often when we're called to a fire that started in the kitchen, the residents tell us that they only left the kitchen for a few minutes," said Fire Marshal Tim Dye. Sadly, that's all it takes for a dangerous fire to start. We hope that Fire Prevention Week will help us reach folks in the community before they've suffered a damaging lesson. Among the safety tips that firefighters and safety advocates will be emphasizing, stay in the kitchen when you are frying, grilling, broiling, or boiling food. If you must leave the room even for a short period of time, turn off the stove. When you are simmering, baking, or roasting food, check it regularly. Stay in the home and use a timer to remind you. If you have young children, use the stove's back burners whenever possible. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from the stove. You might also want to turn the handles on those skillets and pans to the back too, so that the little kids can't reach up and pull those off. When you cook, wear clothing with tight-fitting sleeves. Keep pot holders, oven mitts, wooden utensils, paper, and plastic bags, towels, and anything else that can burn away from your stove top. Clean up food and grease from burners and stove tops. Fire Prevention Week is actively supported by fire departments across the country. Fire Prevention Week is the longest-running public health and safety observance on record."
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Mr. Dunhoff.
I don't have anything. Chief's in the house.
Dun?
No report.
And then we got Mark Stewart in the house. He had that.
Mr. Stewart, do you have anything? All right. Any questions of the Fire EMS, or Mr. Stewart, or Chief Schulkers? Seeing none, we'll move on to Public Works, Mr. Kael, Mr. Brown.
Couple of things to highlight, Mayor. At the end of this month, we're going to start the leaf collection, and everybody can find the schedule. I'm looking at it right here now on www.cie.irlanger.ky.us. It's right there on the front page, 2013 Leaf Schedule.
Very good.
All right. I do have two letters, two of thanks to the Public Works Department. The first one from Bobby Joe Klassner. Rick, I just want to let you know how thankful I am for you and your guys helping me out with the benefits fair. I've never met a group of guys so eager and willing to help out with whatever is needed. You guys go above and beyond the exemplary service and see what you should be so proud to have you working in their community. Thanks for your job, well done. We also have a letter from Laura Binham from Holbert Avenue regarding the looking sanitation drain. It was on Holbert Avenue. Just want to let you know how appreciative I am that the proper great grid has been placed over it as of yesterday. It's a genuine hazard to walkers, runners, and tires. Thanks for all your efforts resolving this issue. So two great correspondence from our citizens.
And then we also got a number of correspondence, and I wanted to pass along my thanks as well to the Public Work Crew and Rick and his team for a great team effort on how great the park and the new gazebo and everything was for Heritage Day. They did an outstanding job.
It was great. It was great.
It was wonderful. The team did a great job, so thank you to all of them.
Smoker.
I'll see that answer.
Any questions? Yes?
I don't know. A couple of residents from Sheerborn asked me to bring up possible speed bump on the main section because cars are speeding. They wanted to know what process to try and initiate that.
Well, CAO, not what's just.
Do they want it, do they want it on the Sheerborn Speedway, the up and down part? Okay. Very good. Next committee is the Administration Committee, Mr. Burke, committee of one tonight.
Committee of one. The first thing here is, we need to set up Halloween for Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I'd like to make that in a form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor of scheduling Thanksgiving for October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00?
How about Halloween?
I didn't mean Thanksgiving. Halloween. We can do Thanksgiving, too. All in favor of scheduling Halloween for October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00? Is that right, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
From 6:00 to 8:00, say boo.
Boo.
All opposed? Boo's have it.
All right. Next, and then Missy needs to speak to us about something. That's good.
Good news.
Good news. I'd like you all to know, today we received a check from our Workforce Comp Caring, or me, for $17,341.80. This is a dividend. It's not a refund or anything like that. It's a dividend check that we received from them for being, having their services since 2010, and then also having a very low rate of workforce comp costs.
Sweet.
Which is kind of nice to get today.
Missy told me this a while back, and, you know, we have a safety committee that works really hard on preventing workplace injuries and preventing, and helping to prohibit our employees from getting in positions where they can be injured. And I, we discussed the possibility of taking a small part of this money, which is already spent, and we're getting it back, and find some way to recognize all of the employees for the hard work they're doing and to provide incentive to keep it up, because a, you know, a safe workplace is a happy workplace, and a happy workplace is productive. So we'll, we'll work on that. Our new, our new CAO needs something else to do, so we'll have to think about that. Any questions of the Administration Committee or Ms. Andrus?
I've got one more.
Yes?
Mr. David Hahn.
Hello, David.
Hello. Just a couple of brief things. On October 15th, at 6:00, Beacon Orthopedics is having their grand opening, and women cutting, so they, and the mayor is going to be there. So you are also invited, so thank you. That is the evening at 6:00 on 15th. That is the third Tuesday. I don't know if there's any committee meeting scheduled. I haven't seen that.
Nothing yet.
Not yet.
Because he's in the chamber and us, so we're looking forward to that.
And I would encourage as many council members that can go, Beacon, we all know Beacon. That's a, you know, a well-known orthopedic group, where they work with the Reds, and they've set up, they've come to Earlanger, so.
They actually, they, today was their first day.
Good.
Where's the location, Dave?
Out here.
Location is in the Spines Center Building there, Houston, at, how was it? 6:00, 6:00 to 15. Another item I just want to bring up, just to pitch your thoughts, there's another funding opportunity for, if you remember, we did the Dixie Highway Unification Project. There's still some money. They opened up some good dollars for that. They don't call it the transportation enhancement, any longer, isn't it? It's a TAC, is the acronym that they use now. He asked me what that means. I couldn't tell you right now what it is.
It's free money. That's all we need to know.
It's a lot of free money. That's the reason I'm here. It's a, it's a 20% match by the city. So we already had some planning done from the transportation enhancement that we applied for a couple of years ago, and it would be from the underpass to Graves where this was started. It's about an $800,000 project, so we would be responsible for 20% of that. So the deadline is October 25th. They have the application in. I've been working on it somewhat, so I just wanted you all to be aware of what we're doing and to see if you all are in favor of that.
Can we?
This will be 20% of 800,000.
Can we do something about the underpass?
Yes, that's part of it, to get that.
I vote yes.
Yes, sir.
You know, we have monies designated every year in our budget for, I won't say beautification, but basically it's for community development. And we all know how bad this section of Dixie Highway is from the underpass to where we started the last time. Here, we now have more grant money. We have the state wanting to help us fix an area that we've been crying about for years.
Right.
I'm not going to guarantee we get it, but I'll be, as I said, it's a different pot of money.
Right.
And the folks at Parkland seem to think that what we do will fit into what we're doing, so I just wanted to get you all's approval.
Any objections to him completing the application?
Good lord. I'll kill anybody that objects.
All right, go for it, Dave.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, the Administration Committee, or Mr. Hahn, or Ms. Andrus? Seeing none, we'll move on to Finance, Mr. Hyer, Mr. Blankenship.
The preliminary work on the June 30 audit has begun, and we will all be receiving a related party questionnaire from the auditors in the next week or so. When you receive the questionnaire, if you would complete it and return it directly to the auditors as quickly as possible. Included in the questionnaire is an informational letter with the auditors outlining their responsibilities, and they're scheduled to begin their fieldwork on October 7th and to complete the fieldwork by October 16.
Greg Engelman's in the house.
Mr. Engelman, I want you to address one thing. Some of us received, and we knew this was going to happen, but let's bring it up again. Our telephone bill still has a 911 charge, and that's leaving January 1st. And some of us received our Duke bill, or Owen County has it on there. Would you mention again the fact that there was going to be a little period of overlap? And we discussed this before.
Yeah, we discussed it several times during the budget process. If you'll recall, when we were going through the budget process, there was a great deal of confusion surrounding the dispatch operation itself, the dispatch operation. We weren't sure who was going to stay, who was going to leave, so there was a lot of uncertainty. They changed the number of hours in the budget process. And on the revenue side, we determined, probably fairly early in the budget process, that this franchise fee was available for use for that kind of purpose. And we decided to do that. And initially, we had the franchise fee set up to begin January 1, and the 911 fees to go off at the same time. That was, I think, probably in February, first of the budget, if you'll all be seeing. As we investigated this thing further, the first numbers that we had gotten from Duke turned out to be wrong. Crescent Springs had the same problem, Elgin had the same problem, and if you'll recall, again, we waited and waited and waited until it was pretty close to the 11th hour, and we finally got decent numbers back from Duke, who we thought were decent numbers. Because of that uncertainty, we decided it would probably be wise for us to have a little bit of an overlap on, on the collections, just to make sure that the numbers that we got from Duke and for electric were accurate, and that we could, in fact, meet the cost of the operation of the dispatch center. So when the final budget was, then also at the same time, we weren't sure when Duke could implement it then. And then it was pretty close to, to June when we finally did the first and second readings of the ordinance allowing that, and we weren't sure even at that point how long it was going to take Duke to actually implement the changes in order to get the collections in place. Those were the primary reasons, I suppose, for the overlap, and that's, that's kind of what we've got right now. So the current plan is that the 911 fees will continue till January 1, and then they will go away completely. The Duke fees are currently in place and those will continue, and that money will be used to fund the dispatch operation.
Thank you.
One final thing, not only, not only dispatch, but one of the reports that was given, was mentioned in your letter, including with the questionnaire, that has to be done. Email, all of it today is scheduled.
It should be done sometime in the summer. Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Engelman or the Finance Committee? Yes, Renee.
There's not really a question, it's a comment. I had a problem with the word brief. Was it for a brief time, it was going to be an overlap? I personally don't think that four months out of 12, which is 33 and 1/3 percent, I don't think that that's brief.
I wouldn't do it that quick. That's my opinion.
I'm not sure if it's brief or not, because, you know, that's, that's what was determined, and that was in fact presented to council, the budget that was recommended and adopted.
Any other questions? Friendship City Networking, Ms. Kyle, Ms. Cahill.
Heritage Day Celebration. The 22nd Annual Heritage Day Celebration took place on Sunday, September 15th, at the Depot Park. This year's celebration was a huge success. The Public Works, Fire, Police, EMS, and General Government Departments were all represented and had booths for families to play games and interact with the employees of each department. The Public Works team was outstanding. They organized and coordinated the setup, teardown of all vendors' booths, chairs, tents, et cetera, and kept things running smooth from start to finish. The park itself was in great condition and looked beautiful. They'd also like to thank Donna Renee Skidmore for providing the wagon rides again this year. Mr. and Mrs. Skidmore did a wonderful job, and we appreciate all the hard work they put into Heritage Days every year. And also thank you to Vicki Kyle for providing St. Henry School student volunteers who helped out with the Children's Quest, manning the caboos, and selling raffle tickets and pizza. A special thank to Rodney Snow, Ralph Sidnor, Faith Woods, Ms. Andrus, Dale Wilson, Rick Bogart, and the entire Public Works team for all the wonderful help throughout the entire event, and to everyone who helped make this year's Heritage Day Celebration a great success.
Yes, and now we have some events that we're looking forward to. In October 1st, Friday, October 18th, from 6:00 until 8:00, the City of Earlanger will hold the 2013 Halloween Haunt at the Railroad Depot Park. And this year, there's going to be a haunted train car, a costume contest for the kids, fun games to play, Halloween bag decorating, hot dogs, hot apple cider, and cupcakes. And we're also in need of some volunteers for this event, so if you know of any students needing community service, please have them contact Karen Moffett at 859-727-2525, and that's extension one. And also Tuesday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 6:30, there's a Halloween party at the library, and the City of Earlanger will be co-sponsoring the annual Halloween party at the Earlanger branch of the Kenton County Public Library, and will be passing out goodies to all the kids who come dressed up and ready to trick or treat. And then in relations to our social media, please visit our website, our Facebook page to take a transportation survey. This survey is being conducted by the OKI, and the survey regards every transportation issue that may, that many face, and hopefully will help solve Kenton County's current and future transportation needs. And for city information...
Vicki, does this Halloween bash at the Depot replace the flagship park haunted trail?
Yes, because I had emailed Karen, because I'm trying to get some volunteers for this event, too, and I asked her, I said, "Is it not a flagship park?" And she said, "No, that's at the Depot." And from what I understand, is they're gonna have some kind of haunted thing where you walk through that train car, the one at the caboose?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and some witches, and, yeah, so it's gonna be at the Depot.
Well, they shouldn't have any trouble finding them.
It's not like you just come here, right?
Takes one to know one.
Ah, that was creepy.
Yes, I had the same question, and so, yeah, that's replacing the one that had a flagship like... And there's also, it doesn't mention it in here, but if you have a pet, they have a pet costume, too. I saw that on that little flyer that we all got.
I heard there's gonna be a haunted conductor with the train car, and maybe some fog.
It sounds really scary if you read that little brochure that Karen sent down.
Our Information Technology Director is in the house. Ms. Hopkins, do you have anything to add this evening? Are there any questions of the Committee, the Friendship City Networking, or Ms. Hopkins? Seeing none?
Yep.
Yep, I'm sorry, Renee, I didn't hear you raise your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was not flapping it hard enough. Anyway, I want to elaborate on the horse-drawn carriage ride that we do. It takes about 20 minutes, and it gives a historical tour all around the quadrant that's labeled Earlanger proper subdivision. And we realized, when we get all finished, at 5:00, when we're supposed to quit, there was enough for three more carriage rides. So we shortened our route, and my husband was instrumental in figuring out how to cut through and still not miss too much. So we'll probably try and do that next year, maybe, because 20 minutes riding is not very long, but if you're in line and you're waiting for the third round back, you're waiting an hour.
Right.
And it seems like when everything else is done, they all wanna get in line for the ride. So we'll try and do something a little bit shorter next year. Maybe it'll work out a little better.
Report of Special Committee, the Compensation Committee, Mr. Fields.
Yeah, we've been meeting, and we will be ready next Tuesday night to make our presentation to council. So everything is progressing.
Very good. You've heard the... Patty?
I would like to reinstate a special committee, if I may. The Friendship Garden Memorial is in need of being updated, and I was on that original committee, along with Bill Howard and a lot of other people. It was a lot of work, and we're very proud of it, and we need to keep it up and going. And Dave's been working on it, and they can put more... What do they call those pillars, Dave? You wanna get up and...
Well, that would be under work in progress, but let's go ahead and do it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we'll reinstitute the committee, that's no problem, because it needs to be brought up to date, has been for years.
Right.
And we'll accept volunteers to be on the committee, and you're the chair.
Yeah, in my big...
There you go.
So you can select your committee from the people who volunteer, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You have heard the reports of standing and special committees. Are there any motions to be adopted as presented? Motion, Ms. Kyle, seconded by Ms. Sudcamp. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any reports from any of our representatives in the groups that we participate in this evening? Yes, Renee?
At the last meeting, I had originally announced that the Kenton County Alliance was struggling and that they weren't gonna get their funding, and they were just, kinda just like foundry a little bit. I talked to Vicki Danzberry, who's in charge of that now, and she has informed me that they're...